All right, let's go ahead and get the meeting called.
He's lucky he got one, didn't he?
Calling the July 2024 Cambridge City Council Meeting in order.
I'm not listening.
And we'll start with an opening prayer and a pledge of allegiance.
We just can't hurry.
Father in heaven, we're so thankful that we're living this free country and the freedoms that we enjoy. Lord, we never want to take that for granted and the freedom that you give us and be able to just live and freedom to worship you and live for you. We're thankful, dear Lord, for the freedom that you've given our lives, that you can set us free from any bondage of sin that may entangle our lives. And Lord, we just celebrate who you are. I pray you just guide us and guide this group of people in this meeting. May you give them once again wisdom and as they have their discussions, dear Lord, and may there be a spirit of unity in this place, we pray in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the high states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I go, hey Bob!
Hey Bob.
You always had the blood in your mouth.
All right, Sher, you want to call it?
Sure. Jim McClain.
Yes.
Mike Amy.
Here.
Debbie McGinnon here.
Gary Cole.
Here.
And Andy Dierke.
Here.
And has everybody reviewed the minutes?
We have two minutes.
The pre-last, two meetings, last monthly, and the last special meeting?
June 10th and June 26th.
So it might want to entertain a motion for a motion.
Make a motion, we accept June 10th minutes.
Say.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the June 10th meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
June 26th.
I'll make a motion, we accept June 26th minutes.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the June 26th meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed as well. Has everybody reviewed the claims for this month?
I'll make a motion that we...
What?
Accept claims for June?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to accept the claims for June. All in favor?
Fairly similar.
Opposed? And the financials?
I'll make a motion to accept the financials also.
Oh, second.
Have a motion and a second to accept the financials presented from June. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed as well.
Great.
We have no public hearing this month, so we'll move on to guests, starting with Philip Schenk, who's interested in vacating an alley, I guess.
You're alleying one right next to my property, one behind you.
So that is, I guess, is where you live?
Yes, about 198 round behind Central School. It's actually mine. It's been my driveway for, well, since the early 70s.
See, I was even, your mom and dad lived there.
Yeah, that's what I think was there, but we maintained it all along. We've lived there for over 10 years. It separates the property. So when my taxes come due, I have to pay separate property taxes for each property. So I won't be able to make it all one home instead.
That's just right there near the one we just did, right?
For Tommy Pitter?
Yeah. So it'd be in that.
That same block, right?
Well, yeah, it's that if you sold, you didn't vacate.
Yeah, we just say there's an alley that runs across the back end of both these properties. And there's actually some properties on the north side that are, why they're lots? Because like three of them are in the rear door, you know? So it's like, but when they came and talked to me about it, I told them what needed to come, you know, come to you guys to get that done, you know, like I said, it's their driveway. They own both sides, the one that's going north and south. And, you know, if we're gonna, you know, well, when the prosecutor sets up vacating that one, we might as well vacate the one that goes clear east and west behind all those properties because it's something that will never develop it or there'll be no need to it. Because like I said, most of those lots on the north side, half of them are down in the river or a part of them are like, you know, like the street.
Are they owned by anybody?
Some of them are the towns and they're all like wooded areas. So there's, you won't be able to build on it. Nobody'd ever be able to go on any of them anyways.
Well, we own eight of those lots.
Okay.
Whatever.
You own the ones that are north of the alley?
It'd be east of the alley. Then I own the ones west of the alley. And then with that alley being there, when I probably follow my taxes, I can't homestead all of them. I might as well go in there and then set.
Yeah. The ones that are right behind him, if I remember, are ones that are actually owned by the town.
Okay, that's what I was.
And then, then like when you get to the west, some of those are, there's a couple owned by the town. I think a couple are owned by Jackie Smith.
Yeah, that would make sense.
Yeah.
As you know, there's a formal procedure to vacate any public way, including an alley. It's a petition that the affected property owner would sign, submit to you guys, then copy is sent to adjoining property owners and notice is also put in the newspapers so the public at large can have a chance to come in, object to it, say they're for it. And so in the past, if it's just affecting one property owner benefit, they can either get their own attorney to prepare that petition or I prepare that at their cost and then we go forward with the hearing itself. So that is a choice. But if we're going to add some other town lots, then it probably wouldn't be fair to put the cost of preparing that petition on all of it onto him. It's just whatever the council wants to do. If you want to consider it at all. It's silly to have it go to that expense and prepare it and file it. If you guys don't want it, I don't make it.
I don't know that I want to roll all of that into one issue. The lots north of the east-west alley as well as vacating the alley. I just assume, if we can vacate the alley and take care of your issue with the single homestead, I think that would be the easiest and quickest route, right?
Yeah, that would be easiest.
Now, what if I was to purchase the north lots?
You'd just have to come back and ask to do that again, to purchase that from the town?
And that's a different procedure that you also have to offer that to the public too with some preference given to adjoining property owners, but just a little bit different procedure.
So we don't need a motion for today. We just need to indicate support?
Yeah, just, yeah, the only time I would verbalize something is if you just absolutely had no interest in it at all. But otherwise, if you've given him the green light, say you would give serious consideration to it, then he can get with me or whoever he wants to to get that petition on file. Then we can present it at the next month's meeting after proper advertising.
I would recommend green light.
Yes.
Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, most of those lots on the north there go right into the river.
On the north-south alley that we're talking about, we own everything around. So it's the only thing that's.
There's just a process I've done before or associated with one that you've done. You just got to go through the process.
Call her, punch her code, and then I'll pull up the plan and explain to me if you want to use it.
Yeah, it's a town.
Probably the easiest, so. Just give me a call and I'll send it out.
Okay.
That's just right.
You're a lot of a.
I'm a lot of a.
Bank child, isn't he?
Yeah.
Anything else we need to do on that pod?
Okay.
No? Okay. You okay with that?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Stay and enjoy the rest of the meeting or you go?
Thanks, thank you.
Fixing to get crazy.
Next up is Adam Zipka from Westler Engineering.
I'm not the reason it's got to go crazy.
This is the part I was talking about earlier.
Counsel, I have an agreement for GIS mapping. I don't believe this major package. Is that correct?
Correct.
I guess I'll have a copy. Take one and pass it down?
All right.
Bob, I have a copy for you also, but I'm not using.
Hey, is that what you need of me?
Yeah, I think our fourth.
Very good. No, I'm gonna keep this for now. So what this is for, it's for field work and then office work to digitize the town's water system. Right now, it's on paper maps and there are some computer maps that were done sometime in the 90s. So this effort would look like first off, a month, 160 hours of Westler staff going around with town staff to survey GPS assets, hydrants, valves, things we can see that are easily identifiable above grade. Once we then survey those items, we'll take that, put it in the computer, and then take the paper maps and the digital maps that we have and rectify the mapping to those features that we then survey. So that'll make sure it's correct from a geographic X-Y perspective. That will be primarily the main deliverable. We'll take a paper mapping and turn it into a computer mapping. But what you can do with that is where we see the value. Using this mapping, we'll make it easier for locates, for work orders, for Ken's staff to track water main breaks and then document those, take pictures, what it looks like, break type. And we would also set up those, they're called data fields in the GIS system, to collect that, to make it easy to populate that information. Third piece of the agreement, I believe is for the first year, and that's like an on-call type of service, just to help out with things that we've seen owners typically need early on in this process. Now, what I don't recall off the top of my head was the cost of the hardware. That's not included. So there'll be an iPad, the GPS accessory equipment, and that's on page four, that the town will also like to purchase so you can update their system map on your own.
MD, right?
Yes, sir. Page four, MD. Did a poor job summing that up, but all the individual equipments listed there. And the intent with this would be after Westler develops the initial software, the initial mapping file, it's then yours. You guys can use this equipment to update, change, modify as you see fit. Plan to fund this would be leftover loan funds from the SRF project. We're still narrowing that down with SRF, but at present, it seems like there's about half a million dollars left in the loan. So we would spend those dollars on this and then the water line replacement that we scoped out earlier with Ken and his guys. I always forget the cost. Total cost for this is just under $44,000 and it is all hourly. So if we can GPS the town in less than a month, then we can do it less than a month and be safe on those costs.
So we did have Ken's guys down here a little over a month ago and did some training on this. And they all, they all loved it, liked what the advantages were to the town, obviously, to finding the lines in the future and even updating them was even a better.
Does this like embed notes that are taken on things?
Yes.
In the software itself?
Great question, Mike. So when we map a water main or a pipe, what we do is then we attach a data table to every single pipe and meter, every asset in the system. And we can customize each of those data fields to be whatever we like.
So we can add our notes customized to what we want in there and call it up three years from now and know what we get?
Yep. Where we see the value is, it's 2:00 in the morning and you get a phone call and Ken knows, oh, I had a water main break here this day, this time, this type, this location. Oh, and it was cold. So right, you know, all that information that no longer has to be up here all the time.
So what we're doing here is using the contingency money for?
Right.
Refresh our memory, at one time when we talked, there were like three different possibilities, kind of a base job, a middle project, and a more costly, expensive project. And I thought we were going to the middle. Is this still the middle project?
Yes. Thank you for bringing those levels up, Bob. This is the middle ground. We ended up a little higher than where we thought that middle ground would be, just based on the field effort to get everything surveyed. The goal, high level, we shot around 100,000 or something like that and then.
And what would that have provided to discuss?
That would be survey of every single thing in town. And that would require town's staff to locate all the pipes.
So this is not, this middle ground's not locating all the pipes in town?
No, it's locating the hydrants and the valves and then rectifying the system to those assets.
So it's just features above ground, nothing below ground?
Correct.
Isn't the below ground where the primary knowledge needs to be understood?
Perhaps I'm not doing the job of explaining what rectifying to those above-grade assets means. So in my mind, man, how do I explain this? We've got it shown, but we don't know how those below-grade assets translate to the above-grade assets. So by knowing where those above-grade assets are, we can then make, assumption's the wrong word to use, a constructibility understanding of how that asset then transfers over. For example, we're shooting a main line valve. Right now, the town, your mapping just says there's a water main somewhere on this street. By surveying the valves on that street, we can then correct that piping location to follow those above-grade assets. Does that answer your question?
I understand what it is. I've been involved in many experiences of trying to find pipes underground. It's done with.
What this will, like our, our paper maps, like I said, will tell us, like I said, there's a six-inch main, but it don't tell us if it's on, you know, like let's say it's an east-west street, it don't tell if it's on the north side or the south side. But with locating all the valves on this, well, that's when we can tell, okay, your valve's here and your valve's here. Well.
There should be a straight line between them with a pipe.
Exactly. That's going to, that will tell us, okay.
But that's exactly.
That main is on the south side of the street and not the north.
I guarantee it.
This is what Jim, I think Jim's getting at.
Yeah.
There should be.
Yeah, there should be a straight line.
That doesn't mean there is.
Right. That's what the middle ground gives us, is there's, that should.
So the higher one would have gotten everything underground?
Provided the town has the ability to locate everything and you're confident with the locates. And that's where that perfection is just very difficult to achieve.
And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but what we're getting now, over time, we might get to there because we're going to have to locate these occasionally.
Yep.
Just add to the day to business, every time we do something.
As you have breaks and taps, if maybe that's a stretch of pipe that didn't have a lot of things to correct it, you can then go back.
You can add that back into that system.
You can.
Where it is located.
Because, you know, there are some intersections that if we located it, or trying to put the lines in that into this, I would not be comfortable with that locate. Because they are, they are areas that we've always had issues, even with the locate hooked up to the meter pit or whatever, we'd get wacky readings. And it's just because there's different stuff in the ground that throws that off.
There's a lot of crap in the ground.
And you need to dig it up.
But, but another thing is, you know, there are advent times, okay, we're, we look at our paper map and we think the main's on the north side of the street. We're looking for valves on the north side of the street. Well, and we go stumble across, oh no, it's over on this side. And that's what this here will eliminate that, trying to guess where valves are.
I think this is a great thing to do. I support it. I just want us all to realize that it's only X percent of the problem. We're still going to have to, X is a big number, hopefully. We'll be up like in a 75% range, but we'll still have to get it right.
Yeah, we, you know, me and Chris have discussed, and we, this is a start.
Yeah.
To get in the system.
You can build on it from there though. So, yeah, we'll have that information delta.
And when we're adding, we're adding into this actual system. We're not writing notes on map.
Right.
Yeah, and the map gets filed maybe in the right location.
I noticed there's some other ongoing fees that the owner's responsible for under the end of Article 2. Are those things able to be paid out of the loan too? Or is that something that we have to stream budgeted for in future years?
Article 2 under D, those are outside of the agreement. So those will be things that will need to be budgeted for in the future. Now, the cost for this equipment can come from the SRF loan. It doesn't make sense for me to buy it and charge you a markup for that equipment. So we can coordinate outside of that for you to buy an iPad with the right types of features and those types of.
So those one-time shots in D could be paid with the?
Yes. Yes, thank you.
And?
One time for some number of years and then we have to upgrade. Also, it's a cloud-based system, so we'll have to make sure the data is, you know, if the company goes out of business, we want the data, so.
Great point. Thank you for bringing that up. So we use the RGIS system that's Esri-based. They are the dog when it comes to cloud services. I obviously, I can't say they'll never go out of business, but man, then the, that'd be a day to see. In terms of the, the ownership of the data, that's, that's 100% of the town's. You know, we'll give you that file. Oftentimes, we still help owners with that stuff just because it's a knowledge base, but yeah, it'll be in the cloud, accessible for you to get to when you need it.
Under 2A, and maybe this is just an award of, for us, what the town's provide, and the town will provide full-time assistance to engineer during the GIS. Does that mean the full-time employee that can't do anything else during that time or?
Yes, we'll need someone to walk our guy around to find those assets. Now, that's not a need, but that increases our efficiency quite a bit.
So how much time would that be expected to take from, I'm assuming it would be our superintendent that would be doing that or?
It would be the 160 field hours that we have. Now, I don't know.
So for four weeks of this time, then it would be as?
I don't know if it would need to be Ken. What we need is someone to take us around and show us where valves are hydrant, valve and hydrants are located.
More than likely, it would be Chris.
Might be Stucky though, has to get involved in Lonnie too.
Yeah, if there's something we can't find, it may be, and there may be Heskin Johnny Moist or two.
Johnny Moist.
Somewhere that had worked here for a long time. If there's something we know is there that we can't find.
So arguably, that could be additional cost too. If we had to pay somebody extra for doing that?
Okay, to pay your own staff, yes, that would be a cost to you.
It should be okay.
Chris, you're no more, and we could ask people to help him, I'm sure.
Certainly don't have to take that approach. We've just seen it pay over, well worth the time eventually.
Yeah, if it knocks 10 hours off of the whole thing, man, you know, then we'd get that half a week early or something, yeah.
I mean, our field guys, they're very experienced. They know where valves and hydrants normally are. That guy knows where it is over in that yard, that one that will never be able to find. And that cuts down a whole lot of the time.
Great.
Great questions.
That could be paid out of that same money, correct?
Yes.
If we had to do any extra.
I'll throw another question, tell me to motion to accept this proposal. Is there more questions?
I would second that.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I already had you.
What are you?
I had you.
As written, I'm sure.
All right, we have a motion and a second to accept the agreement between the town and Westler for the water distribution system, GPS, GIS mapping, as written in the forest today. So all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, counsel. We were already planning to be in town tomorrow to begin the lead service line field work. Now we'll couple this on with that and start both work at the same time.
Well, except for question for Ken, on the remaining funds for the water line, is it approximated that it's going to be $400,000 to $60,000 of work?
That's, we built, there are just some lines that we know we'd like to add to get repaired or upsized. And we just, we started with the mapping as the first, and then there's some different water lines that, you know, that's something that they will come up with what each one will cost. And if we can't do them all, we'll knock one off, you know, we'll take it off the list. We're just going to do as much as we can with the remaining funds.
So we could easily spend all of it though if we wanted to.
Oh, yes, yes. So we've got three water lines we're working at. I believe we won't be able to do all three. It's just more than that's left in the loan. That's still a, because I'm working with estimated costs. What I'd like to do is have SRF approve this and they're going to let us put it into the project. And then we get real pricing. Cooley's, if that's one route we could take, is continue to work with Cooley. They're still under contract for this project. Maybe they gave us good prices and that could be something where we could do all three. I don't know, but I think more than likely than not, we'll be able to do, there was one large one or two of the smaller ones is what I think it would look at.
Yeah, I think those are priorities, but I still stress the need for the, the town within the waterworks world to get capital equipment that it doesn't have. So it doesn't sound like we're going to have that opportunity, but.
I don't think so.
If we did, that should be priority two, in my opinion. Okay. Get those water lines done effectively, cheap, not cheap, done well, cost-effective.
There we go.
Strike that cheap.
Conversation item for counsel to think about, when that time comes, do we want to reach out to Cooley for that? Or would that be something where we'd want to procure it on the street? Don't want to get into that conversation now, but plant the seed for later discussions. I think I've taken your time. We appreciate it.
That's great stuff.
For the energy of the town.
Yeah, this should last a long time while we're doing this.
Thanks, Adam.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to unfinished business. Go to the progress report on the ongoing blighted properties. Ken, I don't know if we need to go through all of them, but you might give us an update.
I went around and looked at some of the properties. This is on some unsightly ones, one with some trash that I'd sent letters to initially that haven't cleaned up. So I'm in the process of issuing them a fine plus another letter. It cleaned up. I'm also in the process of going and reevaluating some of the other properties that we had on our unsafe list that we had gotten some letters from, that they're planning to do this and that to check to see if anything's been done. And if nothing has been, then to reach out to them to see if they can give me a timeframe when they're going to get stuff done, you know, so I don't have to go the route of make an issue unsafe and saying, okay, you've got 90 days to get the roof on that you said you're going to put on. So I'm going to try without going that route, reach out to see if they, if they can give me a timeframe when they're going to get these roofs done or the stuff that needs to be done to the properties.
When you send your update out this Friday, can you update those for us and let us know where we're at?
Yeah.
That spreadsheet, do you have all that on?
Okay.
Everything got turned in all right, didn't it, by July 1?
Yeah, she said that they would be evaluating them last week and then it's 30, 60 days in the most time.
Any other questions there?
I'm good. We'll meet here soon.
Okay.
We'll meet soon.
Keep pressure on, Kim. Next was fire department bylaws.
The red represents changes I've made to what Chief had presented. Did you get your memo on that this afternoon? Probably the most important was the very first red line, just talking about, so that people don't get confused. Years ago, there was a separate corporation, the Cambridge City Fire Department Inc. It's no longer that way. And so in Article 1, we immediately just point out that it's called Cambridge City Volunteer Fire Department, and it is a volunteer department of the town of Cambridge City. And while at all times the department has been controlled by Indian law and town code, these bylaws are intended just to supplement those provisions to assist with the administration of the department of volunteers. And then some minor things, I mean, they talked about contracted by the city, it's actually by the town, catalyzing President throughout as far as him conducting the meetings of the, of the department. And what the secretary is doing is keeping a record of all the business conducted at the meetings and to keep an accurate record. Some of this was just grammatic all that I was trying to fix throughout.
You don't do redneck.
What's that?
You don't do redneck.
In Article 3, I wanted to clarify that it's the business officers that are elected each June, that they are not electing the chief. That's still an appointment by the town, town council. So it's not the fire officers, but the business officers are elected. Everything's defined when you discuss your meeting and what the agenda is. One thing I didn't change, membership shall consist of 25 regular members. Is that set in stone? I mean, if you don't?
No, but, well, I think that's what we have funds to pay the state required amount to.
Okay, so if that ever changed.
We just have to come in and ask them.
Okay. And.
I speak more about it.
As far as going over to Article 6, the next substantive item, as far as if funds are collected on any of your fundraising, it'll be deposited through the town clerk and into the appropriate fund designated for the fire department's use. So there may not be. So there may not be, and Sharon, I've talked about this 100 times, into one certain fund, but it's gonna be for the fire department's use in whatever appropriate fund that is. And then as you're talking about personnel problems, I wanted to clarify at the end of Article Seven that the rules and policies set forth herein shall at all times also be subject to the applicable personnel policy of the town of Cambridge City. And to the extent there's any inconsistency between these bylaws and such policy, the policy of the town shall prevail. As far as the money paid at the end of the year, you talked about as soon as available after the December town board meeting. Well, it's really just anytime prior to the end of each calendar year, that's when they will receive that check. And I didn't want to make it look like they would pay people, I'm just saying the check will consist of the clothing allowance and then the money about for the points. And then Article Nine, when you're talking about any amendment to these bylaws, I wanted to clarify that at all times, any amendments to these would also require the, subject to the approval of the Cambridge City Town Council. So those were my major change, otherwise I thought they were fine and would be appropriate for your consideration unless anybody saw other problems with it. And do you see anything of my changes that caused...
No, no, I appreciate it.
Cause hardware?
That's what I was, that's what I was trying to get.
Do you have this saved on Word or...
Yeah, I have it on Word.
And I can actually do, if this is all right, I can send you a clean.
Okay, then that would be...
I'll, I'll...
Yeah, right, right. That's what I was thinking, it'd save you some time.
Appreciate it.
I think it looks good.
So we need a motion to approve these bylaws, as you have a motion to approve.
At least I was close.
Yeah.
Motion to approve. Second.
Got a motion in a second to approve the bylaws for Cambridge City Fire Department as presented by Bob tonight. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Awesome. Great. Thanks, Paul.
Looks good.
Further discussion on expanding the wifi to the park. I sent everybody an email after last month's meeting. I actually, I called, I spoke to New Lisbon Broadband, and they had already, they indicated they had sent quotes to...
Casey Acacia.
Acacia with Ford Wayne County. For the installation as well as what the monthly fee would be. So I, I did talk to Acacia and she forwarded that to me. And then in the meantime, in my discussion with New Lisbon, I found out they actually have cable into this building right now that got traded many moons ago, I guess, for tower access. And so, you know, I thought at that time it might make sense to see how much it is to get the, you know, the phone and the wifi and everything through them if we're gonna have them out there. So I had them send a quote. Since then, Sharon and I have talked, there might be some issues with email addresses and such if we, if we need to change.
I talked to our IT guy today too. He, he only, he had two questions, was, was the town gonna maintain the park's fiber? And also, are we responsible for the baseball building? That was two of his questions. Because he thought that would be additional charges on the...
Baseball building?
Yeah, the, um, the community building. Because somebody had mentioned, I guess Chad had mentioned that Acacia had talked to somebody about getting wifi in their building as well, the park.
Uh, I think the only thing they've talked about, and it hasn't been decided where that's gonna go out there right now. So I, I think maybe it was just a thought that would go in that building.
Go in that building?
Yeah.
Because we've talked about cameras, which we knew, you know, we...
Yeah, and talking to, to New Lisbon, they indicated that the, the one really good thing about having the wifi in the park is it opens up an opportunity to have wifi cameras instead of hardwired, but, you know, we got quotes that were quite expensive.
Yeah.
And they said, it really opens up an opportunity to have cameras that, you know, connect to that wifi. And then we have an app and we can, you know, share with the police officers and they can, you know, have access to those cameras pretty much all the time. Which, which is a great opportunity.
Yeah, we spoke about that.
Really, because it's something we've talked about, we need to do.
We still have to empower them, but not...
Yeah.
Not even that.
Exactly. So...
They're just a fraction of the cost too, aren't they?
Yeah.
Literally just breathtaking the difference.
As much, as much as we lost last year, we need to have some.
Yeah. So having known that, personally, I think it'd be, you know, I think I shared, I have some of the prices here. Did you save it? Okay. Yeah, so this is for in here. Did you get the other one too?
No, that's it. That's what I had.
So this is the one for the park here. So again, it depends on the speed and whether, you know, and I think what I quoted to Acacia at the time was the 50 by 50. And I'm not sure how that equates to speed or whether we need something faster, but that was $109 a month just to supply that internet.
Quick question from Richard. We're gonna have a monitoring station here for monitoring the cameras. And then, so you would need to have enough bandwidth to see pretty real-time display.
Yeah, in the past, we had, you know, with the... It wasn't wifi. The DDR was just by wifi. The cameras were all hardwired to the DDR. And we had, we could access those through our computers as well, through, through an app, you know. That's all outdated by, you know, like a long time ago, but... So we'd like to have access to be, for an app or something to access in our car too, because that's where we spend most of our time, right?
Right.
But why?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, that's why having fiber here in the building that is scaled appropriately is all I'm saying. Because there's going to be a base for, for observation if we needed it, plus in the cars. But that would, and the cars would probably come from a server-based solution that, that transmits. So that somewhere that's gotta sit in a device. Steph may know something about that as well.
It'd be nice for it down here, because if down in that building, anybody can shut it off, they could absolutely shut off it anytime intentionally.
One of the problems we had in the past, and I don't think it's been corrected, but when they shut the lights off, especially Christmas lights, it kills all the power in the park. You don't have power, you have no cameras. The hardwired cameras. If we do with the wifi version or the, you know, wifi version, most of them run on batteries. The ones I have in my house have lithium batteries, which was the last two years without changing them. That's obviously the more motion and things you have, the more it's gonna activate it, but... So that's something we're gonna have to look at too, is first off correcting that. I don't know how that happened where it killed all the power in the park.
I know, because I, I said to Ken when I walked through the night of the fireworks, it was pitch black through here. And there were no, there was like one light on over by where the new, um, she paid for.
They didn't try to turn the lights back on around the bolt, so it wouldn't burn out. It'd need to be replaced, but it's gonna, I guess it's gonna be a positive money to replace that.
That's what I'm saying, that would've been, the power would've been out.
So we gotta, however, however we end up doing, we need to address that issue as well.
So we have to talk about that for budget, budget issue.
So would you be able to stream live those cameras?
We weren't recording last time, I mean, I think they ended up on the bandwidth.
That's, yeah.
There's, there's some variables in there.
Yeah.
Correct first, but, yeah.
And I'm not suggesting we add all this to it, but having Main Street cameras would be...
Absolutely.
Very important.
I said every year.
At least a couple of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
High def, that you can get three or four through them.
So I guess what I'd like to, you know, obviously there's more discussion, but what I would like to be able to do is go to the next help meeting and say, yes, we want the wifi in the park, so they can plan it. It's, and the installation is like, is $3,500, but they are gonna cover. So we would just have to, you know, commit to, yes, we're gonna pay the monthly fee for that bill.
Are you also considering the fire station too with the new venue behind there? You're gonna need probably a couple cameras there too. If we're gonna add it on there, we try to cover anything we possibly can.
Sure. No, I agree.
We should, maybe that's, maybe that could be a separate system internally in the fire department, but whatever.
I think that's all, something New Lisbon can help us with. So we should commit to this, is what you're asking, but then put together some work effort to define, design what we wanna do. And maybe have it prepared for the budget meeting.
Could you just do the park only and not this, not this city...
I'm not asking too much.
We can, we can. And I just got that because I thought it was an opportunity.
Yeah.
Uh, because right now, you know, what we're paying is...
$333.
$333 a month, and they gave us some options that were significantly under that.
What is, what is your email address? What's the...
Comcast.
So that could be an issue.
That will be an issue.
I know.
So we'll have to change.
Everything, we need to look at upgrading Earth dot gov email address like, like we have. We can probably do that, add that on to our Google Doc stuff that all that we have, could be for an additional cost, but... You know, a doc gov and the email addresses look better than Comcast.net, I mean, for a government agency.
Oh, I agree, but sure, everybody can change, right?
I wonder if, like you said, Bob, Bob, when you guys switched your name and then when we were using the wrong email, it would flip back and say, this is the new email. Did you guys set that up or did it...
I don't know if you did, but we did have it so that if somehow it was the old one, it would automatically roll over and go down for a period of time. Actually, it's been a couple of years.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yeah. So I wanted to have that one. I mean, that, maybe our IT guy could do that.
So this sounds like another aspect of this whole thing.
Yes.
Yeah, that's something we'd have to be able to do. The Army did it for over a year when everybody in the Army's email, when we updated it, forwarded it to your, your credit. So you're talking hundreds of thousands.
Sure. But I would like to just change once, you know, I don't wanna go to an N L B C email and then go to a doc gov.
What I think, what I'm thinking, we're looking at, you know, if, if we just say right now, you know, they said $109 a month, but if we look at it the whole program, we might go reduce our present costs so that it's not actually gonna be $109 of actual additional months. So, but I think it probably needs more in-depth study to, to commit to that. But what I would like to do is, is go, be able to go to help and say, yes, the town is willing to pay for monthly service in the park.
Do you need a motion?
I would say absolutely.
Need a motion or are we good?
Yeah, 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 I think so.
Make a motion to accept the, uh, the monthly fees as represented by Ford Wayne County's, is it Ford Wayne County?
Yeah, in the help program.
In the help program. I didn't say it right. Somebody will read it.
Okay, we have a motion to agree to internet access in the park through the help program and Cambridge City to pay the monthly fee for that, so.
So, and pay this out of...
So...
The monthly fee.
It won't start though for until next year's budget, right?
I'm sure it won't.
We'll have to figure it out.
Who knows?
It's not gonna start by, when will you pay internet service out of that?
General and wide, because I have a little bit in the internet and phones that's in our budget.
Can you take that out of...
But if I'm gonna be, I mean, if we'll keep paying Comcast, then, and then I have this other amount, then...
You really think it'll start before the end of the year?
I don't know.
I think it'll result, won't resolve until next year, would be my opinion.
Okay.
We're not gonna...
Base our budget then, I guess?
Yes, we're not gonna have a system in park probably, so we have the money to do that. Unless you, or is there any stipulation that, that costs start?
No.
Okay.
No.
Should be good.
All right. Cool.
Uh, we did a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Uh, update on the park project and update on performance venue. Debbie, you wanna cover the playground?
No, you go ahead.
Okay, so, yeah, I guess the good news is everybody saw that we hit our target to get the matching funds through to creating places, and so we will be getting the additional $50,000. I think the money was just over $80,000 that was collected. And so we, we are moving forward with the playground project. And the park committee is meeting, uh, begin tomorrow, actually to go forward. And I think the, uh, the playground people said we could even order the equipment without having the rest of that money yet because they know where it's coming, so. And it's six to eight weeks or something or more to get the, and they're doing other projects. So they, they think it's a good idea to go ahead and get them more, so. We do have some work that we're gonna have to do, and we'll be in contact with Ken. And it's, we are gonna have to pull out some of the equipment and then we're gonna have to prep the area. And also prep for some sidewalks that we'll be going in that were actually donated as a kind donation, so.
That's great news.
It's gonna look nice.
And you can see the new inversion's up already, which is similar, I suppose, to what you're...
Yeah.
Ball again.
Yeah, the one piece is similar, I think, to the one piece.
I think so, yeah. They're just so bright and colorful there.
Oh, you drive down the road and all of a sudden, whoa.
They look nice.
The park looked nice.
I think that East Germantown was the first one that's actually in right now, so it's, really looks good. It's good for them.
Better.
Yeah, it's gonna look nice.
As far as the performance venue, I think we shared out that the plan is to go out for bids on that this month. And I think it's in next, will be in next week's paper to ask for bids. And Bob, I think everything's okay in that now, right, for, so. And I, what they, the goal is to have, and I think what should happen is they have to advertise for two weeks. We get the quotes in, or the bids in. Actually, the final day is the day of our next meeting. And we'll open those in the next meeting.
I haven't seen revised ones after I gave my comments, the last one. Have they, did they fix all of that then?
I believe so. I'll double check. I'm meeting with Cecil tomorrow, so we can...
I said we'd like...
Yeah. Uh, we did talk to him. He didn't have any problem with everything.
I know, that's what he said, so I just wanted to, sure.
Yeah.
Team out that way.
Yeah. Point. So anyway, that's actually, so next meeting, we'll have an agenda to open those bids. And we'll probably, I'm guessing we'll probably need to table those for review. And then we'll award those at a later time, so, at a different, probably a special meeting. Any questions about all that? Okay. New business. Space Monkey Mafia.
He called. They, they have already approached the community club and they, their softball season has started and they want to hold a overnight tournament, the 20th and the 21st, in the park. And the community club said they had to ask you guys.
So does that mean they play on their own?
They don't play on their own.
We used to do it.
Yeah.
I've played in one of those one time, but I remember it.
Hope nice party at Saturday night?
Yes.
Where are these folks from?
Space Monkey Mafia.
Space.
They're from this area.
Okay.
I mean, we, we've had over my compliments before, I don't know if there's...
Are there rules, regulations?
Well, I mean, you're basically waiving some of your code sections that says the park closes at a certain time. So you're waiving that, and so then wanting conditions that you wanna put in. I would prefer what the police might think, and any sanitation, anything else that you wanna put conditions on that, if you're in favor of even doing it. If you've got a blank slate, what do you wanna work on and require?
Concerned, Richard?
Alcohol, we've had issues with tournaments in the past and alcohol, so obviously we wanna keep that ban on, I believe, not allow it.
Will there be a community representative there, like baseball, whatever the, whatever it is?
Who's, who's over this thing? Somebody's gotta be in charge of it.
We could have a name and a number.
The, the name is Brett Edwards, is, he's the guy... The, the name is Brett Edwards, is, he's the guy that is the Space Monkey Mafia. That's holding up the tournament. Brett Edwards.
Are they enough organized to have their own sort of insurance policy that they're covering?
I can ask them.
Insurance, porta-johns, maybe a dumpster?
They won't have access to the facilities, right?
Yeah, they'll have to have a porta-john, because I don't think Bob unlocked the building.
They won't even unlock it for anybody using the shelter.
I don't think we should open it up overnight.
No open burning, this, this, even though there's no burning park, specified agreement there will be no open burning.
Yeah.
We don't need campfires down there. But people down there not drinking, we don't want them.
This isn't until September, is there any way they can get us answers?
Yeah.
Now, they need to schedule it. They need to schedule it though, that's the thing. They gotta be willing to commit to, like what you were saying, the porta-pots.
Yeah, and we could send them a, a list of concerns, I think. I don't know if we need to vote on that list of concerns, but come up with a list and send them, get some answers back.
Can you vote in, uh, in contingency if they agree to A, B, C, D, E?
Absolutely.
We would support it?
So I've got insurance policy.
You want to have insurance clarifying that there's no alcohol, that there's no burning on the day, the facilities will not be open. Therefore, they have to provide their own porta-potties. We said requiring insurance, is there anything?
Leave it as they find it.
What hours are they gonna be there?
Hours?
Yeah, leave it as they.
He said it was gonna start at eight o'clock on Friday, but he didn't say when it was going to end.
Need to have some kind of.
Yeah.
Idea when they're gonna be done.
Well, there, there'll probably be a lot of trash, they'll probably fill up all those barrels around there, so.
They'll need to bring in their own dumpster or something.
Probably need some kind of dumpster, because there's not enough barrels.
There's one dumpster there.
There, there's one down there, as long as they agree to keep the barrels empty.
I know, that's why.
And they would ultimately be required to sign the documents of these conditions.
Yes.
Okay.
So if we vote on that now, saying if they accept all of this, then how you put a document together for their signature? And after that signature, you'll know by your August meeting whether they've done that or not. Don't require them to say yea or nay to all those conditions, so that you can sign off on that document on, in August. So you're basically approving it with these conditions and if they say no, that's on them, so. If they do sign it, then they can go ahead and prepare and, and schedule everything.
Yep.
Need to vote on that, though. Yep. Make a motion, we accept Space Monkey Mafia softball league's, uh, overnight softball tournament contingent upon the signing of our, uh, document of concerns.
And you have what those are, Bob?
I have them there.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Debbie.
Debbie.
Debbie. All right, have a motion of second to approve the overnight tournament, subject to, uh, signing off on the conditions. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next, it's budget workshop time.
Yeah, I thought it might be helpful to kind of, for anybody new to the board, what's required with the budget timing process. And we kind of work backwards, the state requires that the budget be approved by November the first. That's the latest that the town, or has it approved their budget? You have to have a public hearing at least ten days prior to that, which would put that, the last date is October the twenty-second. You have to post it on Gateway, the state at least ten days before that, which would be October the twelfth. Now, so that we don't, historically, we try not to schedule special meetings on it. Consequently, in order to meet that November first adoption date, we have a budget ready for approval on October meeting, which would be October the fourteenth. That pre, that public hearing on it, the answer, again, if you want to avoid any special meetings, would therefore be at your September meeting, September ninth. To meet the ten-day posting deadline on that, means we'd have to post it on Gateway by August the thirtieth. Which is good, because August fourteenth is when Cherry and I meet with the state budget rep to answer any, through the questions that we have. And you have a council meeting on August the twelfth, but that didn't give us much time to get something ready for any questions on August fourteenth. Consequently, that backs us up to having a budget workshop on what you guys want to see in next year's budget prior to then. I know that Cherry had put on July thirtieth that I just see, and that unfortunately is during my vacation. So I won't be here on July thirtieth and I probably need reasons I.
Sure.
So the prior week would be good, you know, anybody can meet that prior week. The one afterwards, I'd be back by that Wednesday the following week, that crutches are just a little bit, but it's doable. So, but I just, I cannot. I'll be in New York that following week.
First week in August?
So the week of the fifth? And I can do the week of the twenty-second. Do you want?
I'd sure hate to miss that. You say you cannot, the week of the twenty-second, you can.
Well, I'll be, I'll be in Nashville for at least two days. I could, or the beginning of the week, twenty-second or twenty-third? Twenty-second, I can do it.
Okay. We could do Monday, the twenty-second, or do you say, or should I say the twenty-third, or you'd rather say?
I can do the twenty-third.
I'm gonna be out, I'm gonna be out on the twenty-second.
Oh, good, because I won't, I probably won't be back on the twenty-second. Probably late the twenty-second.
Okay.
So twenty-third?
Twenty-third, I can do.
Can you do the twenty-third?
Yeah.
Looks like we're on July twenty-third, is, is that a?
Wes, can we go earlier than six, since it takes us all night?
Sorry, five?
I, I'm okay, five, four.
Yeah, whatever time. I've got a four mark appointment that they, I can kick up, but she's gonna be almost down the street.
Richard, what about you and Ken and Jim?
Five is good for me.
Okay. Five o'clock, yeah.
Is that a public meeting?
It is, no, it's a public meeting.
Just nobody shows up, because they know us all night long.
And Cherry will get to us before then, what has been spent in each category up through June thirtieth. How much more we have to spend or need to spend, so that that can give us an idea, are we over budgeted, under budgeted on each one of the line items part of the budget?
Yeah.
We also get, uh, overview of source of funds, uh, income, and all the budgets for all the departments near departments?
Yep. We, uh, hails all the departments, we will not necessarily, I mean, you kind of back into the budget. Because as far as what monies are available, it depends on how much you want to spend. And then you, you set your tax rate based on how much money you need.
I was thinking about rainy day funds and other things.
Yes, I mean, you don't have balances.
That's all, I just wanted, I didn't know what was.
Yeah, yeah, you'll have each fund and each preparation what's been spent.
Okay, that's perfect.
Oh, it's a lot. I'm gonna bring a snack.
And near the end of the evening, you're saying, why don't we do this?
Well, yeah, we get down to, let's do general first, this is.
Yeah, do general first.
Because by the time we get to rainy day, we're like, okay, yeah, let's go, this is good.
We have some pizzas brought in.
Yeah, we should.
That'd be nice, we've never done this. We've never done that.
So we'll set that for July twenty-third at five o'clock.
Yes.
Right here.
Perfect.
All right, we'll go to staff reports. Richard, do you want to go first?
Yeah, I can go first. I think y'all have a copy of the interlocal agreement we had for the local money.
Bob, did you need a copy, did you bring?
I brought it and it's all fun.
Okay, I, I knew you had looked over it already.
I believe it's all, it was all approved, contained on this interlocal agreement, and Bob looked it over, it's good, and so we need signatures on that.
This is the first time they, they're looking at it.
Okay.
Bob looked at it, I sent it to you.
Right.
And they have not looked at it until tonight. Correct?
Correct.
You guys haven't seen it?
So they will, I looked at it earlier.
And they made a motion to. And this is on the opioid money.
Yeah, this is thirty thousand, five hundred.
Three, thirty thousand, five hundred and three.
Yeah, five hundred and three dollars that they're gonna, they're gonna get to us.
This is, this was based on from our request, right?
This is, this is for us trying to purchase the tree mark.
Trying to what?
Oh, per, based on purchasing of the tree, tree mark equipment that we're gonna buy for.
Yep. All right, so we need a motion to accept the center local agreement. So move. Good.
I'll make a motion.
All right, we have a motion of second to accept in local agreement for thirty thousand, five hundred and three dollars with the county. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Cherry, do you have the one that has been signed by the county?
I just have a copy of one.
Because I have the one that's signed by the county.
Okay, yeah, you use that.
When we sign, we might as well sign.
Yes, mine's just all copies.
Then you'll get, you'll get that to the county council involved?
I will.
You sign, you sign two, so that you can have the original. Jim, will you sign this one as well, too, and then we'll have one for here and then we can get that taken down?
Anything else?
Yeah, um, so the speed limit radar signs came in, they're currently in the garage. I guess we need to decide where we're gonna put them at and how we're gonna, how we're gonna do that. I thought they came with a mounting pole, it looks like they do not. So I talked to Jim briefly about it, uh, obviously, want to reach into town, be, you know, the ideal situation. It depends on where you want to do it, and if we have permission to do it, that, you know. So that's something you need to think about or discuss. Uh, if I can give it to Ken, we'll look at, maybe we can look at the whole amount of the box and see what kind of pole we'll have to have. The mounting brackets, so we can look at, we'll have some idea on that. I'm, I'm guessing it's probably not gonna be a real big pole, not like the one that's in Purdon. But we have, I don't know, a lot to look at, it just came, they just came in last week, so.
If you put it on forty, do you know if you do have to have approval from the state or not?
I think if we put it in the state right away, we probably have to have it. If we put it on private property or town property, then whatnot, obviously.
But private property would be on the other side of the sidewalk, so, right, it wouldn't be between the sidewalk.
No, no, like you mentioned, if I have a little waste, or if the goalie owns some of that property, it might be a, you know, place there feasible to put one there, I don't know.
Down the library.
And the library owns their property too, so, um, that would make the most sense to me, but these are also, you know, mobile, if we want to move them, we'd have to put poles up other places to do that, but, um, we can cross that bridge like dirt.
Is your recommendation to have them on forty?
Absolutely, I think if we're gonna do it, and that's where we need to start out with, yeah.
Well, I can talk to the goalie center board and the library board. And see if they would approve locating, although again, I think they need to be, you'll read in the instructions, I'm sure they have to be near the road somewhat.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have to see what, what they recommend, but, and also, they'll probably want to know what type of pole it's gonna be on too, but, um, we'll try, maybe Wednesday I'll work, or I'll get that, or.
Just let me know then.
Can you adjust the wording on the bottom, slow down, you're driving too fast.
I don't, I don't know if the teams actually say slow down on them, I, I'm assuming they probably do, they flash things, slow down, but I doubt if we can change the wording. I haven't looked at any of the software or any of that stuff yet, but I don't. So I guess we can table this till next meeting or something, till we get a better plan, but I just want you to, y'all be aware that the, that they come in, you have, so. I think I had the invoice already in email, so.
Main Street will need to pay into the, write a check to the town.
And then I'm just gonna write a check, right?
I'll try to get you a claim on that Tuesday, Wednesday when I work, so.
So the speed signs on next month's agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah?
So we got, we, if you guys recall, we got a four thousand dollar grant, so to speak, from Director Fairway County a while back. And in the part of that grant was, um, to be used for training for canine purposes. And so this hits canine training seminar, it's a handler instruction and training seminar, it's coming up, um, in August. And we'd like for Seth to be able to go to that, it's a huge deal. They have training every day, I think there's like five going on, at two different locations at the same time, all day long. They can pick and choose which ones they go to, but, um, it's in, it's in New Orleans, and so I'd like to use a portion of the Dr. Fairway County money that we got for that. What's that?
Yeah, it's about drivers.
It's gonna be approximately, right, about sixteen hundred dollars to, for the airfare, hotel and, um, the registration. The hotel could be cheaper than that if he, if he ends up sharing a room with someone else, like from Richmond, for example. We don't know how that's gonna work out just yet, but, um, so maybe to prove up to sixteen hundred dollars.
Have we already got the money?
Yes. The training is, uh, twenty.
Twenty fifth.
Twenty third through the thirtieth. Of August.
See, but I won't make a motion to prove that.
It's a little farther away this time, we, we did have, uh, hey, Smirly went, when he was here, and that was in, uh, Chicago. And so, obviously, he can just drive up there, New Orleans is a little further away, so he's gonna fly, but.
Any motion to prove?
I'll second.
Have a motion of second to approve, uh, Seth's attending the, uh, training in New Orleans. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Well, as I know, we talked in a previous meetings about the mold in the evidence room, and we started on that today. Can't, may speak more on that, but, uh, I think Barnheiser, is it? Barnheiser's coming next Monday.
Yeah, Tuesday.
Tuesday. So we might as well start cleaning that out, trying to get prepared for them, so hopefully, uh, it won't take a day or two to get that done, so. We are, we are prepared, by tomorrow, we'll be prepared for it, so.
Gotta get rid of that.
I think we need to look at, and we can get Ken on this, putting some type of fan in there.
And that's, one of the guy from Barnheiser was here and looked at it. He stopped in my office after he was done there and he, he recommended, um, to, some kind of fans in there to circulate air and even putting a dehumidifier back in there, because, I mean, there's, there's nothing. Dead airspace, gets humid back there and that, and so that's something, you know, the, you know, something we need to look at down the road.
We didn't, we didn't have that issue until we put the door, Andrew Gordon in the hall, they, we had, we had them running out of rooms, we had to make it bigger. And they cut off the airflow, so, um, there wasn't any forethought of, you know, mold being down the road when we did that, but.
There's no cold air entering back there?
Hey, and also the building was leaking in the corner, I didn't help as any easier, but hopefully that's.
We know that's bad air.
I don't know for sure yet.
It's supposed to rain this week.
Yeah, hopefully, I think it's supposed to rain tomorrow, actually, so maybe we can take a look.
I think they're all cleared where they can, it is raining, you'll be able to tell.
It's ninety-nine percent emptied out, I have maybe three boxes.
I know, you worked so hard on it today.
I worked, and almost an entire twelve-hour shift today on it.
That's all, yeah.
Great, thanks.
Weekend was good, the car show and the fireworks came off, as planned, everything went well.
Very good.
We made a pretty good profit on the car show, I turned to Cherry this morning. Then Saturday, we'll be, uh, having the kitchen open for the concert.
So now you're starting to make your money from when you lost from the.
Right, well, we lost on the, we're starting to get it back.
That's good, yeah.
Hundred thirty-two cars, hundred thirty, acres by close to a hundred fifty there, up to a hundred thirty, rich there.
Was that the most you've had?
That's the most we've had.
I've heard many people's talking about how good it was.
It was good, and it was.
It was, it was big, yeah.
And the fireworks went all for it.
They were good.
Nice.
Thank you.
You guys think good.
Very nice.
Um, Dave Shane got hurt, did you know that? He got.
He got so in his eye, I guess.
Um, he went to the eye doctor today and they pulled out metal out of his eye.
Metal, really?
So we turned it in to the insurance.
I had talked to him, basically.
Is he okay?
Yes. It was straight in there, I guess.
She was, well, pretty low.
Do you guys wear goggles, that was one of the questions they asked me.
He didn't have, I don't know, they have the shields on their hands.
They have the shields on, okay, that's why I told them they had a shield. They have the shields on, okay. That's why I told him they had a shield on. They probably just, he was looking up, looking in. Okay.
They had, we had to cap a few of them, one off on the ground, and that spreads things around a lot, so.
And I said, why do people love those? Because you guys are running.
Because it's exciting. You just hear my run.
I know, and they love it.
Pretty exciting.
Can you hear them?
Yeah, we got one.
Yeah, you're right. They were, they were very nice.
Scratch.
Yeah, it was.
Now, will that come off of the workers' comp or the insurance for the fire, for the fire?
It'll come off workers' comp.
Okay. Because I verified Brad a couple of years ago that we definitely do have the full policy.
Well, it's, it's the town, everybody has.
Yeah, right. But there is a rider on there for fireworks.
I turned it all over to Brad, so if it isn't, yeah, he'll, he'll take it right.
Anything else?
Oh, I'm good.
Thank you, sir. Ken, what do you have for us?
All right, well, one thing I just want to let you know, the horse shit pits are done.
Yay. Can, can people pitch at them now?
Oh, yeah. Stakes are in the ground and everything, so they're ready. Adam did sort of highlight, or mentioned it, tomorrow will be a guy here from Westler, and one of the guys will be with him. A lot of, this is all coming down from EPA, and that from, and a lot of it started when Flint had their lead issue. We have to go through and verify, identify what kind of lines we have. And so this next step is verifying what homeowners have going into their house and what we have going to the mains. And so they'll be going from pit to pit and opening, looking at the lines and verifying what's in the, coming up in the meter pit, which also is sort of killing one of the birds with what we're doing with the mapping, because that was one of the things where I put on the mapping is all of our meters and that. And they said they GPS this stuff. And then once, once they get all this information on, from the meter pits, put it onto a spreadsheet that they've already started on that we have to submit to IDM by the middle of October. So they're going to be starting on that tomorrow. And then the other, the other thing is, you know, Jeff had mentioned about the lights on top of the bowl that weren't work, are not working. There are some up there. John Turpin had looked at them and the way those poles are, they have like a disc with a bunch of your, like dials or whatever that light up that give the light. Those things are $500 apiece to replace. And, and it's not something that just screws in. It's all hardwired in. And so I talked, he gave me a price, like I said, with what's out, it would take, cost $2,500 to replace all that. And then like I said, you know, a month from now, we could have two more of them go out or, you know, so. And so I asked him and he gave me a price. What, I asked him if we could rework those a little more, we could put LED bulb in there instead of these things. And he said, yeah. He said, let me, he said, let me look and see. And he called me back and he said, with what part, with the things he'd have to get to do it, he said he could try and convert all those to where they could take a bulb. It'd be $375 per light, and there's nine lights up there. And like I said, and then down the road, when one goes out, you can replace a $100 bulb versus a $500.
Plus the cost of adding so many wires.
Exactly. And so.
And they're brighter.
I wanted to bring it up to you guys, you know, my recommendation is to have John get the stuff and convert those lights over so we can put screw-in bulb in. But I did want to bring it to you guys and get your guys' thoughts and.
$2,500 more than just replacing those old style lights.
Does that $375?
Our plan, $1,000.
It's probably not the bulb.
So would you have to get the bulbs or does he have the bulbs?
He may, he probably would have the initial ones, but then, you know, like I said, once I know what kind of bulb it is, I can get replacements. And these bulbs that, the kind of bulb that we'd be putting in would be the same type that we've been, we started using downtown. They have a five-year warranty. We write the date on the bulb when we put it in, so if that bulb quits in, you know, in a year, well, we can take it back and get, get it replaced.
Wouldn't that take a lot less electricity, Ken?
Like these?
It's a lot less.
Well, what's up there, what's in there now is LED.
It is LED.
But like I said, it's just the way it's made.
Yeah, right.
You know, my guys can't go up there with a bucket truck, open it up and change a bulb, you know, to make it work again.
So we're looking, if my calculation's right, it's be $3,375 to replace nine of them, convert them over as opposed to $2,500 to.
Four, I think it's either four or five that are working.
I think it'd be money well spent.
I think so.
Yeah.
Long run.
I mean, they're there. We got to keep them working.
Right, yeah, you don't want them to be out.
I don't like to see that when lights are there and they never work.
Yeah, you're right, it's dark.
Very. I think that has to be serious.
Side, side question on this. Is there any way we can put lighting in that isn't glaringly white, like a 5,000 Kelvin? Don't put something like that in. Can we put lights that are a little more, less light pollution than something?
Yellow, like the yellow lights or something?
A warmer light than a bright white. Do they realize it's not as bright?
You know, some of the streetlights there, I noticed that are yellow and some are really white, not our lights, the Duke lights.
I would have to look into see what's, what kind of bulbs are available. I mean, the bulbs that I've been getting are just the ones that we've been getting ever since those downtown streetlights.
I mean, they're, they're relatively warm lights now. I'm just saying, people, the one with the windows, it, that, somebody welding. It's up bright to 5,000 Kelvin or whatever, 5,000, whatever it is. Just to talk. That's not part of the AT.
This seems like an exaggeration.
He must have a light right outside this.
You see those little guys in there welding?
We don't have any lights in my end of town.
Can we put a shield behind that so it won't be glaring in there?
But the purpose of a light is to see.
Lit up, that's right. Just to light up the ground, not the whole world.
Well, just part of it, so it's not glaring in your windows.
Just my tree hunting coming out.
Okay.
I don't think we need any kind of motion for that or anything.
Well, if you're going to change up the picture.
We're changing.
So one way or the other, he's either going to change the pictures or he's going to just replace what's broken now.
And you're going, are you going to take it out of the park equipment?
I'll find it. There's, I got, there's different places in the park, stuff that I can.
About medit?
Consider that.
Yeah, there's the medit money, yeah. Yeah, we could do that. Yeah.
I'll make a motion. We have John change the park lights out for, how much was it?
Well, $3,375.
So you thought it should come up about $375 each light to be at, so we can.
For nine of those, $33.
$3275.
For $3375, approximately. I don't know if that's going to be right though.
Well, if it's $375 times nine, yes.
Okay.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the changing of the park lights to the new style that Ken presented for $375 per light. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nice. That'll be nice.
Swaggy.
That'll be nice.
That's all I have.
Nothing else?
I have one thing.
I have one thing.
Go ahead.
Might be the same thing you have.
No.
Um, I wanted to remind everybody on the antique show and the junk in the trunk, and then Marty came in.
That's what I was.
Because he said you were going to bring it up.
Yeah, so on August 10th, there's a recommendation to have a mini antique fair, in essence, where antique dealers that have come here before would, would get a table only. And it would be set up, the request is to set it up in the alley between Dr. Birch's office and, what's the next antique mall?
High Hats.
High Hats?
Not his office.
Pardon?
You said Dr. Birch's office?
Dr. Birch's, uh.
Building 125.
Building 125. That alley running north and across the street by a cabin running south. That's Marty's request to close both alleys, two, two of the alleys that run east-west.
Okay, just have, just have one.
Just one?
We, we showed that person our problem. We work that.
And it's just single, small tables. There won't be any cars in them, so.
So this will be kind of piggyback on the junk in the trunk, right?
Is that the same with him?
Uh huh, yes. And I did tell him that, because he wasn't aware of that, but he's, he he just thought that if it's something big, then he'd like to take off on that next year again with this.
Makes sense. So we have to vote on that?
Oh, we're going to close something. We would, because that's going to come before your office meeting.
So was that your motion?
Maybe we should approve the closing of two alleys that I just described.
Good, got it.
Second.
For the tent.
I was, have a motion, a second, to close the two alleys for August 10th for the antique, mini antique show. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Did you have anything else?
Nope, that was it.
I have one more thing too.
Go ahead.
Do we need any type of motion or action to get the TV set up in here that you've been, you told me about and get the?
Oh, yeah. So we, we've talked about this, about members being able to participate in a meeting, that they're able to be seen or heard. And in the meantime, I found out the guys mentioned there was a TV.
We got a monitor.
Monitor that we could probably use to do that, that we could set it up here. And all we would need is somebody bring a laptop in to be able to do that.
To run a Zoom meeting, or?
Yeah. So.
And be able to get on the Wi-Fi.
Yeah.
So I think all we're asking is to, to put up a monitor in here to, to do that, for possible future use. We did use, I brought one in for the training and we did some stuff on it and we'd be able to use it for those type of things as well, so.
And the big displays like that, you know, PowerPoint presentations or whatever.
Then you'd be able to go and, you'd be live.
Let me check the laws again on how that can be done.
I know we do at the EDC, so you just got to be able to be seen and be heard.
I think you're only allowed to do it so many times a year.
Yeah, there's a limit.
I, per individual. You can do it every meeting, but each individual can only do it twice, 100%.
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
So meantime, we at least decide to go ahead and put the monitor up, I suppose.
We already have it.
Yeah.
Is that an expenditure?
Honestly, there's an expenditure attached to it, I'll be just.
Good. We need a motion.
You say there's not going to be an expenditure? I mean, are.
TV is available.
TV's available. Do you have internet?
Is there a bracket mounted?
I was going to say it should be brack, put a bracket back there.
Is he kind of bracketed with this or not?
You have to buy those mounts. Yeah, we, we may need a wall.
They swivel mounts. They're like 20 bucks at Harbor Freight.
And such you're making the change to a public room, I would say a buck would be appropriate, so that somebody doesn't get the idea that they can just come in and install anything they want at any time.
Okay, move to, that we.
Install a monitor.
Installs a monitor in the.
Comfort room.
Second.
All right, motion, a second, for installation of an existing monitor into the chamber here. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
It doesn't have to be your way.
Gary, you have anything to tell? Debbie?
Uh, well, yeah, I asked Ken earlier. I had some neighbors come to me about the traffic being so, they speed down that street, so awful.
We can, we're.
And we've got a lot of new kids and they're wanting signs that says, you know, children that play or whatever. So Ken's going to look into that, so if we can get a sign or two. But, and I suggested maybe a speed limit sign. I don't even know where there's a speed limit sign at on that road. But they come from the cemetery going south and, oh my goodness. And there's a lot of little kids out there now and it's.
Maybe we need to ask the county to put a sign up as well, because you're coming from a rural road in the town, and so the speed limits do change and.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think there's a speed limit sign out there either, so.
But, I mean, you can hear them when they come around the corner going north. I mean, they squeal those tires and they're flying by the time they get to my house, you know.
Over the hill there.
Yeah, and.
And if there are Amish on that road.
Yeah, that's true. And there's a lot of Amish on that road. And I noticed some of the, a new family that's come in, they have little kids and they're constantly riding up and down the sidewalk and they turn around in people's driveways and they get a little close to the edge of the road and, oh, it just worries me sick. So, and evidently it's worried some other neighbors, because I've had two approach me about signs, trying to slow that traffic down, so. Hopefully, we can get something done.
So, so Debbie, I had another person in the neighborhood who was concerned, who was asking about some children at play signs. So we're going to be ordering a couple for that and then just order a couple more for out there.
Yeah. Okay, sounds good. Can you review the speed limit issue too?
So, will that reach out to, so the county would be in charge of any?
Well, no, right here where the houses are, I think it's still be 30 miles an hour, but past the last house, would then go to 45, 105 actually. And it's depending on how they posted, but, yeah, I think the biggest problem is people coming from north to south. They don't slow down when they come off, you know, come over the hill. They're still 145.
Well, there's some young people live somewhere out there, because they got hot rod cars, I'll tell you that. Loud ones and makes you turn your head and hear them coming.
Yeah. Like I said, I told her, I'll see if I, if I've got a 30 speed limit sign that I can put like upon the side of the houses they're on. If I still got one, I'll get, put one of them up there, and if not, I'll get order a 30.
But from the.
From the cemetery, we should be all right. That's our property.
And then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then I'll, I'll get a hold of Mike Sharp and see if there's anything the county can put up out there.
They've always gone fast on that road.
Yeah, some, some children signs. If there are children to play or whatever, it would be good to have also.
Mike, you have anything?
I'm good, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you, motion for our jury.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.